Engelhardt.
Here.
Ingstrom.
Here.
Malcolm.
Here.
Grimmerman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Thank you. And item number three is the pledge. All of you that are able to stand, please stand and we'll recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of our Lord and our Saviour. Okay, then item four on the agenda is perfection and approval of the agenda. Somebody would like to make a motion to that, please.
Come on in.
Larry?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Carrie, thank you. Item five then is citizens present for any concerns, for anybody sitting out there, if you got something you want to talk about, now is the time.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Behrens. I'm the librarian at the public library. And I'd like to introduce my replacement. This is Crystal Duffy. So I thought she wanted to join us tonight. This is Lori Moore, Darcy, Matt, Dennis Keeney, Matt Ellis, Ross Malcolm, Mary Ingstrom, and Becky Eagle. I just wanted to she bring us tonight.
Wonderful, wonderful. Welcome.
Are you from around here?
No. But I live in Castalia.
Okay.
But I'm from Southern California.
Oh, my!
Happy to explain how I ended up here sometime.
I can, and I can too.
All right, well, nice to meet you. Anybody else? Right, well, then let's go on to item six, and that's Holorson Cooney, and it's the amendment to the Urban Revitalization Plan, some direction. And we have with us tonight Nathan Overberg. And he's going to lead us along with with some things. I know we had questions last month, so we're glad you're here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and I think Dan's on the phone, and Zeb and Larry, I didn't get to meet you before the meeting. Nathan Overberg from Holorson Cooney. And thanks to your city attorney for inviting me to come and help with this particular project. We were involved when the city adopted its revitalization plan back in 2005. I saw that you also utilized Simmering and Corey, who we do a lot of work with as well, who was the plan writer in 2005. Not a lot has changed materially in the law since that time, with maybe one exception. And that is, in that time period, the state introduced the concept of multifamily assessment categories, and then allowed for a certain abatement of those types of properties. And then now they've taken away the multifamily assessment category during that time period. But the law does allow you to have a heightened or more aggressive abatement schedule for those types of properties. That used to be assessed as multifamily or multi-residential property. And now they're assessed simply as residential. But there's a particular carve-out in the law that allows them to be treated differently if there's no blight designation. And I'll talk about that in more detail. But what I wanted to introduce at the beginning was that we were involved in 2005. I think your plan is really pretty much how we would draft it today if we were starting from scratch, along with the assistance of Simmering and Corey. And I wanted to introduce that concept. The law really hasn't changed that much since that time. I know that the city is interested in trying to do all it can to assist with respect to residential development and redevelopment. That's consistent across the state. My firm works in all 99 counties and work all sizes of cities. And so I know the needs of communities like Postville, and we appreciate that. But the legislature sees fit to put certain restrictions on most of your economic development tools. And that's true with respect to Chapter 404, which is the revitalization code. So essentially, I understood you were looking for two significant changes under the code. One, to try to enhance the residential assessment abatement schedule. And then, two, to maybe tweak how much investment or increase in assessment you need to see in order to qualify for the abatement. And there are two legislative restrictions that impact that. One, if your plan or area is designated under subsections four or five of the designation portion of the law, which has to do whether or not it's an economic development area or an area appropriate for residential development, then it limits the type of the schedule you can apply to residential property. And in that case, it's a 100% abatement for five years on the first $75,000 of increased value. And that's actually the current schedule that you have in your plan, and that's why it was written that way. Because that limitation came into play in 1997. Again, if you wanted to, you could identify the multifamilies or residential property with three or more living units on that property and provide it with a heightened abatement schedule. That schedule could be up to 100% of the full increased value for up to 10 years. And some communities are doing that if they have a particular need or desire to see increase in multifamily units or multi-residential units in the community. I know that you may see other types of abatement schedules that are more aggressive or perhaps don't have the $75,000 value. And as I talked to Darcy about that, I don't know which particular communities you're talking about or their particular history. But I do know that I see that happen in usually one of three ways. One, some of these revitalization plans existed before 97. You can go back to the 80s or early 90s. And some communities just don't mess with it. And if they had a more aggressive abatement schedule before the legislature added that limitation, they just continued to kind of treat that as a grandfathered abatement schedule. Some communities have, instead of designating their areas as revitalization areas under that fourth or fifth category, as economic development area or as an area that's appropriate for residential development, they may have designated it as a blighted revitalization area or a slum revitalization area or as a historic revitalization area. And if you have designated your area as any of those first three, then the limitation that they added in 404.3A wouldn't apply to your residential abatement schedule. Another reason you may see that, in addition to the grandfathered approach or perhaps the abatement or the different designation, maybe just that they put together the plan without understanding the code or the limitations that are in it. And you know, every community uses their attorneys in different ways, and sometimes they just move ahead without seeking that type of advice. I can tell you that I'm confident that that's how the law reads. In fact, when they just recently changed and took away the assessment category of multi-residential, I worked at the League of Cities, Robert Palmer down at the League of Cities, to make sure that the legislation carved out the ability to have the more aggressive schedule for multi-residential. Because we had had a lot of communities who had implemented that more aggressive schedule for multifamily units when there was that separate assessment category. And so, and that was an intentional attempt to try to at least not make it any worse than it already was with respect to that assessment category. When it comes to how much increased value you need to see in order to qualify, again, the code gives you a modicum of flexibility. But it tells you that you can't require a higher increased value than their defaults, which is 10% an increase in value for residential property and 15% increase for commercial or industrial. So if you wanted to increase the required amount of increased value to qualify, if it's a commercial property or industrial property, up to 15%, you could certainly do that. But your current plan has you at 10% for all property, and you could not increase that for residential property and remain consistent with the code. You could require something less, like 5% increased value. I think you see that less frequently, probably because that becomes an administrative difficulty to try to figure out, you know, putting on a new deck, is that added 5% value or not? Usually, to get to the 10% level has to be something more significant that the assessor can really identify and know that you've reached that level. But I wanted to make those introductory remarks to respond to the particular issues that I was aware of and try to lay the groundwork for the additional questions that I know some of you may have. And I'd be happy to field those. And I've missed the mark and understood all that and wanted to talk about something else. Talk about that now, too.
So in this blight area designation, it says diversity of ownership. Like, how would you define that?
So if a particular property is under contract, for example, or the contracted, it's owned by trust or multiple owners, and it's having those types of multiple owners that are preventing the redevelopment or the upkeep, et cetera, that's like what they're talking about in those areas.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did, I did talk to Darcy about, you know, if you wanted to change your designation. It doesn't happen a lot. There's nothing in the code that specifically prevents it. And the legislature knows how to do that, because in Chapter 403, which is urban renewal, which I know you've used in the past anyway, they have now specifically said you cannot re-designate an area. If you've called it an economic development area, you can't go back and now say it's blighted and vice versa. There's not that type of limitation in Chapter 404 for revitalization. So there's no express limitation on doing that. We've seen it done a few times across the state. I think the biggest hurdle is you have to look at your community or your area and be willing to say, yes, we meet that definition. And it's got to be more than one or two homes. It's kind of be, you know, it talks about the presence of a substantial number of the properties that are blighted, et cetera. And if you did that, then you'd have to make that particular finding as the council. Ultimately, it comes down to the council to say, yeah, we think we meet that definition. And then if you did that, potentially you could do more in the way of abatement schedule.
So what's our current city you want to read? And what was it that we wanted to have it go to?
Your city currently provides for the five-year 100% on $75,000 of value for the residential property. And then a three-year 100% for commercial or industrial property. And then I think what you talked about doing for both types of property is a five-year sliding scale without any dollar value limitation. And one of the issues that I raised is even in what you wanted to do for your commercial schedule, the five-year schedule, you cannot in any year provide a higher abatement schedule than what the law allows you to do. So we'd have to tweak your five-year sliding scale even for commercial. You could certainly do a five-year sliding scale. It would just have to match the sliding scale that's available under the code. The three, this, as I said, this is the most standard we see. Commercial-industrial at three-year 100%. The five-year 100% at $75,000 of value for residential. What we are seeing more of, as I said, is then having a separate abatement schedule for residential property that has three or more units or the multifamily units. And for those, you could go up to the 10-year 100% of abatement schedule if you wanted to do that.
So were we just thinking about that wrong before? For some reason, I was thinking that it didn't start until they hit $75,000 of increased value. And we were talking that that would be a lot of dollars for percentage-wise for our city to increase by. But instead, it's the first $75,000. Is that correct?
Correct. Confirm the last part. I don't know what raised the question, but yeah, it's the first $75,000 of value.
Yeah, I think we were-
Which does help with the infill.
Right. I think we were trying to get it so more people could utilize it, thinking that it didn't start until you had to have 75, or some number. I'm not saying it's 75, but we were talking for some homes, that would be a heck of an increase in value from where they are.
Right.
So it starts from dollar zero, basically.
Exactly. Of increased value. Yep, and it's not, just keep in mind, too, it's not dollars inputted. It's the increased assessment value above what it was before they did the improvement.
Right.
So the base value, whatever is currently there, they continue to pay taxes on that. It doesn't touch that at all. They have to do some improvements that raise it by the 10%. But if they hit that trigger of raising the value by at least 10%, then the first $75,000 of value would be abated. They don't pay any taxes on it. City, school, or county, it's as if that assessed value isn't even on the books for those five years.
Let's say they increased the property value, the project was $30,000.
Yep.
They would get the abatement on the $30,000.
Correct.
Once they hit 70, if they hit $77,000, they'd only get it on the 75, but not on the last two.
Correct.
Okay. And where does the 10% come in as a limitation of?
That's like the trigger. At a minimum, they have to raise the value of their property by the 10%.
So these are improvements on a property?
Exactly correct. Yep. The intent of the code is they incentivize folks to improve their property, whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential. So it also preserves the existing tax base for all the taxing entities. And it gives that incentive and it allows the, it prevents someone from saying, well, I would improve my place, but I don't want to pay any more taxes. Well, you can do the improvements and not pay taxes, at least for residential on the first $75,000 of value. And for your commercial property, it's, it'd be up to $10 million of additional value for that three-year period.
But it has to increase by the 10% as well, is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Can you lower that on commercial or not?
You can.
Is that where we're at now? Is the 10%?
It is. You can increase that one to 15% if you want to do. And you can decrease it by, down to 5% if you wanted to, or whatever number you like.
Well, I think some of our bigger industries, a 10% increase would be, not saying not doable, but it would be a big project, you know? I mean, you take a Norplex or an Agra, of what their assessed values are and what it would take to meet that. And then I guess the other part is that the responsibility of the homeowner and the industrial or commercial owner to apply for that, or?
It is.
Okay.
100%. Yep.
So you need to advertise it more too, to make people aware?
Yep, that's true. So then they apply. It comes to you first to look at it and say, you know, is it within our area? Is it assessed appropriately? Have they filled out the paperwork correctly? And if it's all right by you, then you pass it on to the assessor. And then the assessor does the math and figures out if they meet that trigger. They've increased the value by the minimum amount. And then it's up to the county to apply the abatement. So the good thing about this incentive is, once you have the plan in place, once they've applied and you've said you meet our plan, kind of hand it off to the county, and they administer the abatement during that time period. You don't have to do anything else associated with it.
Because I don't think we get many apps even turned in for it, do we? Or am I incorrect on that?
No, we don't.
And there has to be a number of homes that have been increased by over 10%. And for whatever reason, not applied. I think it's just an education thing, probably. Yeah, like I said, I think we were misreading for whatever reason on that.
Darcy, did I answer the question?
You did, yeah.
Don't float it around.
We can lower the commercial, the investor.
You could.
Pros, cons, accessibility, irrelevability to get in the program, plus.
The only con that I could see is, again, the administration of that for the county to be able to say, hey, is this 5% increase or not? They ought to be able to figure that out. You could work with the assessor, see how many high-value properties you have and how many you're talking about. If you wanted to think about that. Certainly be that.
If Agustar tore out all that cement. If Agustar tore out all that cement out there, that would improve that property, wouldn't it? 5%?
Yeah.
Out of it, you know, where the turkey plant used to grow that junky concrete out there.
Dan, did you have any questions? I know you looked at this and were able to hear me and?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. No, I didn't really have any major questions, you know? I started to look at it and said, this is really, your guys is Bailey Wick, so you have the expertise in this area. So the advice makes sense to me. And ultimately, it'll be kind of up to the council, how they want to go, so.
So when you shake it all out, then if we compare it to what we had and what we're asking for?
Yeah. So again, you have pretty much the standard for commercial and residential. You're limited unless you make a major change and make the blight finding and designation, et cetera, to do anything more in the residential area. Commercial, you have the three-year 100%. There is a 10-year sliding scale available that starts at 80% of the value and goes down. Most of the people have done the math, seem to think that the commercial people like the three-year 100% better. You could give them the option of choosing between the three-year 100% or the 10-year sliding scale. And then the only other policy question I think I would have are the, you want to reduce the commercial requirement, or the residential for that matter, on the increased value? And do you want to do anything for multifamily ones, for multifamily units? That's different than your residential.
Right, now we don't have anything for multifamily?
They would be eligible to apply for the residential, but they would be limited to the $75,000. So if they built a $2 million, 12-unit apartment building, for example, they'd be limited to the $75,000 of value. And that's totally up to you, folks. To some communities, that's not their goal. Their goal is to get the infill, the existing properties, to, you know, do some improvements and help with upkeep, et cetera, and that's fine. But some communities really want to see increased multifamily units, so they're willing to do a higher schedule there. Sometimes having that available helps. If the builder or developer is applying for state aid, workforce housing tax credits, for example, require a local match of $1,000 per unit. And that abatement sometimes can serve as that local match. So you could also wait and see if you have folks asking for that and then amend to add that schedule, if that's something you're interested in. And that's really what I would think, Mayor, that you would be focused on. Do you want to do anything with the lowering of the commercial investment trigger? Do you want to do anything with respect to your existing commercial? Do you want to add anything for multifamily? And you don't have to do anything right now if you don't want to, because you're in pretty good shape, as I said. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, it's okay. Wouldn't all those apartment buildings be considered multifamily, then? We have quite a few of those.
But they're built or utilized, they have to be.
Well, the prime is improved. I mean.
Yeah.
Well, this whole question got started because a fellow came and talked to me, and he was, you know, thinking about building a new house in town. Or then he got to looking at everybody else's, what they're doing in other towns, and they're... And I guess the way you explained it, maybe, I mean, they had a sweet deal going there. I mean...
And more limited to the $75,000 cap, is that correct?
Right.
What we're doing?
With what you're currently doing.
Can that be changed or no?
The only way to do that is if you, again, change your designation.
Okay.
To make a blight, historical, or slum finding.
But we're talking, okay, so if we took a look at a brand-new, I mean, a brand-new building, and it's, you know, when they go through and you get tax abatements, 100% for five years.
Five years, yeah.
Yeah. So what?
Those are grandfathered in?
Either they are grandfathered in, they kind of weren't familiar with the law, or they have a citywide residential or blight finding or historical finding. So they say, our entire city is part of our revitalization area. And because of that, this is our residential schedule. And it's something, it doesn't have the $75,000 cap. And so that allows the new build on the green field to get the same abatement schedule as somebody remodeling a home. And so that's when we talked about a little bit with Darcy. I've had a couple of communities that identified pockets of blighted portions of their community and give those blighted areas an increased abatement to try to get them to fix up the properties. But it does not help bring a new construction to a greenfield site. Because you can't have agricultural property be declared blighted or green property be blighted. So the way those communities would have done it in the past is to say, our entire area, our entire city, is the revitalization area. We're designate, there's a substantial enough number of historical or blighted properties in our community to call the entire community blighted or residential.
Yeah.
And then even if there's new developments in the city, then they get that increased schedule. I've had two communities that I've helped in that area, and actually, one of them had that for a while. And as the homes got built up and they decided they needed some of that tax revenue to provide the services to those homes, they've actually now gone to have no residential abatement. And I have one that has added that, an entire community blight finding.
Well, I can understand that, you know? And especially, you know, the further you go down the road, that, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna need some of these tax dollars back.
Right.
But the idea too was, you know, how do you, how do you entice these folks to build here instead of there? You know, if it just gets to a tax, if that's the only reason, you know? You know, we figured we maybe, we needed to be in that same playing field, but evidently, we can't be there.
And I assume smaller towns like ours are easier to put in the entire city as one, because you're sporadically spread out with blighted homes throughout the community rather than like, say, a Waterloo that's taking a spot where they have and then build them up, like you say. Well, then all of a sudden, that's not a blighted area anymore, so they go to another spot that's a blighted area and try improving that one.
Yeah.
Or bigger communities like Waterloo would be more spot-specific, maybe. But smaller towns, it's easier to declare the whole one, just because you do have homes that fall out of disrepair, scattered throughout your community more so. Without the new construction that goes on, you know, it's not a, we don't really have a new area than out by Roca and over in Clayton County there by the pond.
Yeah.
So we could do it entire city, you think, or not?
Only if you're comfortable that you could meet this definition that I laid out in that email. And if you think you can, what I talked to Darcy about is Simmering and Corey, who did your, and this is just an example, who did your prior plan, they will come do a windshield survey, for example. Drive through your community, you know, which homes would meet this definition and deteriorated. They'll talk to Darcy kind of about, are there particular portions of your community where because of dilapidated buildings, you have any type of, and probably talk to the chief about a lot of police calls or et cetera to those properties, and try to help you bolster making that particular finding. And if you do something like that, and sometimes the COGS will do that, your council of government, but in any event, you know, unfortunately, I have to pay for somebody to come in and do that for you. But if you're really interested in it, that would probably be the next step, would be to do that type of survey.
Well, and I think for where we've sent out, you know, to fix up your property or whatever's been spread out through the community, maybe more in one general area, but I think throughout the community, we've done that on some homes.
So when a community designates the blight, they're finding the blight, what does that do to the assessor? Does that spur them to come in and reduce property values?
I have not seen that, but you probably want to have a dialogue with the assessor about that. That's the risk, if the community, you know, there could be some political ramifications for the community coming and questioning, why are you designating the areas blighted or et cetera?
That, you know, honestly, that's quite, that's quite a word.
Right.
Yeah.
I understand.
It's like, you don't want to-
Yeah, you don't want, no one does that. But yeah, if it's scattered, you know, so, yeah.
So as we proceed with this, and I, how do we, how do we, how do we sweeten the pot here then? I mean, how, you know, if we don't, if we don't go with the blighted area and just put in what we can do? I mean, how, you know, if we don't, if we don't go with the blighted area and just put in what we can do. Well, I got another question first, though. How about if we just went to a different code? Is that possible?
There really aren't any other residential abatement options. So you, I don't know, you may have an industrial abatement ordinance. I don't know if Darcy knows or Dan knows, it's called the four twenty-seven B, that's a five-year sliding scale. It applies only to industrial property or warehouses, et cetera. There's some for high-quality jobs, projects, which isn't for residential. So really, your only residential abatement tool that you're authorized is chapter four oh four, this revitalization. Communities are asking the same question, Mayor, what can we do? You know, urban renewal is there in TIF, but unfortunately, again, the legislature has put some limitations on using that for market rate housing. You have more flexibility to help with low and moderate income housing, which is housing that's affordable or occupied by low and moderate income families, which are people making eighty percent or less of your median county income. But if you get to market rate housing, you really can only use tax increment financing to help with public improvements. So roads, et cetera, a one-off home that's on an existing, you know, connect to the water main and the road's already there. TIP's not going to help you much with that. It may be available to help if you have a parse, you know, a subdivision. It's going to come in and you can help them cover the cost of infrastructure. So if you have a project like that come in, I'd have Darcy give us a call about this urban rule TIF a possibility. The only other thing that the conversation we've started to have, and I've met with the, talked to the IEDA folks about, is just general cash on the barrelhead to help people build homes. While we run into there is there's a constitutional prohibition that says public bodies can't use dollar or public monies for private purposes. So you have to identify the public purpose. And there's a real outcry now from a lot of your colleagues across the state saying, well, workforce housing, maybe not just low and moderate income housing, but not million-dollar homes. There's a real need for workforce housing to be able to attract employees, which obviously you need in order to deepen, attract employers. So some communities are really trying to explore that without specific legislative authority to do it. And we're also working with the IEDA to potentially amend some codes to specifically identify that as a, as a public purpose. But that's the only other option, is if you have extra dollars around that you can put together a program with certain criteria that will assist with workforce housing, that maybe you could get there. Those are the tools that I'm, I'm seeing, Mayor. Urban revitalization, that you're already working on and have, as I said, a good plan. Urban renewal TIF, which is more useful where there's a need for infrastructure, like a subdivision. And then just kind of money to assist folks build housing.
So like Decora, they either didn't adopt the state one or their whole community's considered historical or blight, which I would assume they go under the historical or something, but.
I think it's the latter. We didn't do their work back then, but they actually, I think that.
Yeah, they did historical, probably.
So I think I looked at that for another community.
Because they do a hundred percent on, and they advertise it, so that's the one that pulls hard on us. And not necessarily people that build here, but that's the one that people come to you and compare to, you know?
Understood. Which community I looked at that with them as well.
Well, Walk On was the same, wasn't it?
But they get a hundred percent for five years, yeah.
Because they're historical?
Well, or blighted one or the other, they, either way, you can do it.
Well, you know, if a guy can get over that word, I guess it ain't a big deal.
Yeah.
Well, and the other part is, do we have enough historical stuff? Maybe not. I don't know, spread throughout the community or not? Blighted, I think you could probably justify a home here or there throughout the community, though.
Yeah. Well, like Darcy's thought was, does that, does that mean, you know, that, does that, your valuations, you know? But I, that's another.
That affects county level too, though, if they go to that extreme.
Yeah, that's the, the other thing to look at, but, yeah.
Yeah, we, like you said, communication with the assessor.
So the idea is, you know, you know this, I mean, you want to try to help the ones that want to come in, you know? And then, and because we want them here, you know, we don't want them to go to Decora, Walk On, we want them here.
Well, and, go ahead.
And, but, you know, so I guess, you know, like I said, this is how this conversation got started. So it looks to me, though, that we really can't, we can't do what we, what we wanted to do, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Without taking that additional step of re-designating.
When, when did this log wind to affect communities? So, yeah, it'd be nice if they make some adjourn, sort of adjustment, seventy-five thousand nowadays sure doesn't buy what it did in nineteen ninety-seven.
Great point.
You know? I mean, shoot, just look in the last couple of years of what it's done, a little long going back to ninety-seven.
We have a good relationship with your local legislator, that would be something you could raise with them or the league of cities. I don't disagree.
In ninety-seven, you probably could have got a, maybe that top-of-the-line home, but you could have covered a pretty good portion of a nice home for seventy-five grand in ninety-seven.
Yep.
And it's seventy-five thousand of statewide?
Yeah.
Because that's not really fair either, you know, I mean, different areas.
Also, great point, because there are signs, some of the economic development tools, there's a distinction between small cities and large cities. And they characterize small city based, like, it's usually the eleven most populous counties are large city communities. And then the other eighty-eight counties are usually the cities and those are considered small cities. But that's a great point, love, Mary, that you could maybe convince them to have that type of distinction.
Yeah, some communities should probably pay seventy-five thousand for the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know?
Usually.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, well.
Well, I think we're in a better spot than what we thought we were to the extent that it's not, it's on the first seventy-five thousand, not that you had to put seventy-five thousand into it to get anything. Because I think for some reason, that's kind of what we were reading into it, but it's still not where we'd like to be.
Well, let you guys think about it, and we're here to help, whatever changes you want to make. And if you, you know, want to think about that blight designation, we could get, if you guys know somebody up here who can help with that type of background, you know, if you have a plan or you can use whatever, but. Other than that, you're in pretty good shape. See what you can do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Okay, well, is that it for that item, you guys? Yeah, happy with that? All right.
Changes or suggest changes or?
Yeah, what, what would you?
Just be lower the percentage, maybe, I'm thinking like, lower the percentage for the industrial. Can encourage them to do improvement. That would be, it's lower the percentage for chance to do, right?
Right.
That's still a three-year, I'm going through a lot of rigmarole, because it's not going to be the three-year total. It's not a five-year sliding scale, it's, that sort should be. Look, we had, you said the three-year total, put in three years. Three-year, they got it for tax abatement for three years.
And right now, we don't have.
It wouldn't include brand-new construction.
It does.
It does.
Oh, it does. But we don't have multifamily anywhere in that.
They're two different things. We're talking about industry and commercial. Multi-residential.
I see what you're saying, yes.
So you got a percentage in my area.
Five. You got to start someplace. Talk about, say, I have a twenty-five million dollar project. Okay? What would their tax normally be? Or what would five percent? Let's see. Get five percent abatement on it, right?
They'd have to have an improvement of one point two-five million.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So if it was a new construction, though, they qualify for a hundred percent of everything because it's starting from zero.
Okay.
Other than the land value.
And you have existing.
Existing, you'd have to, that's what would be more is existing increasing by five percent. So if you had, if you're a four million, you'd have to do a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand before you qualified.
Try to have, I got this written.
And then over that, you'd. Right, because you have to be over that to qualify, correct?
Right.
So if you say you had, like you said, the two million dollars instead of two hundred thousand, they'd have to spend a hundred thousand to qualify for it. And then anything over a hundred would qualify, first hundred would not.
Okay, or bigger, the bigger industries, that would be easy for them to.
Correct.
Could be easy, you can't do much for, you know, there ought to be a million plus.
Right. But that doesn't necessarily mean the SUS value will go up, that, just because that's what you spent, doesn't mean the SUS value changes that.
So that's what I did about two-thirds, is not, two-quarters, two-thirds of actual value.
Just keep in mind on the upside of that, if you have a commercial building that's a hundred thousand dollars, five thousand.
Thousand, right. Right.
Which is fine.
Right. And I don't know, like I say, how many would even come in for the, if they were at that, you know, we don't even have the ones coming that are qualifying on the housing side. We've had a lot of them that would qualify there, but. Yeah, but just an education thing, you got to let them know.
They didn't know it was there.
Right, yeah, I mean, anybody would have certainly applied, I would think, if they were aware of it.
Right.
Is that something we, if we see somebody improving, can point out, let them know that?
Sure.
Because then you get it, the word seems like it spreads faster if people start using it and they're aware of it.
Yeah. I guess my only other question is, we're confident that this legal description covers most of your communities, all right? There is a map attached to what you had sent me. So the description is exhibit A, and then the map had looked like most of the community except.
Except for the TIF areas.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's the description we had, we think that covered most of the community, as far as we know.
So the no in the center and then the outliers, correct, was not in it because of TIF?
Yeah, we don't work on the legal description, so I don't. Assuming that covers, it's in the map.
The heavy dark, it looks right.
Very back of this. Package.
Oh, and that, okay. The no one.
Is that a green in it? Like, who's dark, but the green is?
You have to look, did you see a lagoon there?
Yeah.
I think physical plant is, but maybe not the lagoons.
I can't tell if this is a part of it, this, this is big from here. And this is TIFs here and then here. So, TIFs would be here, I think, and this littler, the dark line is ours. This would be a TIF again, I'd be, this would be a TIF area out here with the smaller lines. Maybe even there.
Our flex is right here.
There's my guess. So are the ones in the smaller bold line, are those TIF districts or not?
In the lighter.
Right.
These are TIF.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then that center one that says no, is that a TIF one as well? Okay, and down towards the bottom? Could be.
I don't know why that says no. It says no, so I don't think that's a TIF.
That's up, that's what's on.
Be in Clayton County. Just isn't showing on the map, correct, that goes down that way?
Yeah, that's tipped in Clayton.
Right.
Our corporate citizens who.
No, because they're not in our system.
I think that would be the school.
The school would be over there, one TIF. Look over there, yeah.
Because is this the street that goes by the school?
Mm-hmm. Well, what's this road right here?
This is eighteen and fifty-two.
So that'd be out by pines.
Yeah.
That area. The business area.
Oh, that's cemetery, I bet. Marcy, or Darcy, would that no be the cemetery, maybe?
This is the school here, because that's not.
Because that goes in behind fifty-two and eighteen back and on the right.
So that may be something you want to look into. Darcy and Dan, what's controls is the actual legal description, which is exhibit A. And just make sure that your map is at your, right? Based upon the descriptions. Because you can include urban renewal TIF property in a revitalization area. And your plan already acknowledges that if they're getting benefits from urban renewal TIF, they're just not going to be eligible for the abatement unless you guys give them an okay. So just because they're in a urban renewal TIF doesn't automatically mean they can't be or aren't in your revitalization area. So I just suggest you look at that legal description.
Of the church?
And make sure that that's, your map matches that. I don't have any reason to say that, but I shouldn't, but.
So there's a house up here.
All right, so we need to, need to give a, some kind of direction?
Like, Carolina, choices, look into the blight thing if we want to, and we could reduce the industrial, commercial if we wanted. About the only options that I'm hearing, if I'm correct?
Yeah, the only other thing is multifamily.
Right, 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 no, but yeah, it's a good thing to address, right, it is, yeah. And what's definition of multifamily?
It's three or more living units.
Okay. And those can be up to a hundred percent of the value, is that correct?
You can set the schedule up to a hundred percent for up to ten years.
Might miss some old houses that have three apartments.
Yeah, but they'd have to do renovation. Which isn't all bad.
Right.
No, ten, ten years seems like a long time, but you don't have to have a beautiful ten years either. You can go up to that.
If I have one community, for example, that for the multi-residential did, fought to match what they have for the rest of the residential, it's five years up to a hundred percent, up to seventy-five thousand dollars of increased value per unit, as an example.
Sure.
Just an idea, that you have flexibility under the.
But we don't have it in our thing at all for multifamily, that's something we'd have to add.
Correct. Yep. The amendment process is basically two council meetings. You have to set a public hearing, you have to issue public notice, hold a public hearing, and then amend your plan to do this type of change. If you were looking to add property to your area, that takes a bit more work. This type of amendment is essentially two council meetings, public hearing after second council meeting. And we'd help you through that process if you decide to do that, though.
Yeah.
So we have this as a topic for the next council meeting?
As long as we've got, we've got, you know, he's answered everything that.
Right.
So when we, when we go to the next council meeting, though, we understand what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, so.
If we have thoughts, it'd probably be good to bounce them off before he leaves at least, or get them figured out before he leaves. One of the others, so that we're doing correctly.
Yeah. It looks like, it looks like we'll probably, you know, table this till next month, until we can come up with something there, some direction for you to take. Because you're the guy that's going to put this together, right?
That's right.
So we really got three key areas, the multifamily, if we want to reduce that amount on percentage on commercial and industrial, and then if we wanted to look at the blighted for the whole area.
Correct.
Okay, you could call the whole town blighted?
They'd have to come do a survey, but yeah, if you got enough homes scattered throughout that are blighted, you could qualify for the whole community, which is easier in a town our size, like I say, than a bigger town. Because bigger towns, it seems like it kind of moves, that they go into the older housing, what's more affordable. Then that doesn't get fixed, and sooner or later, it becomes blighted and they fix it up. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm available by phone, and if any of you have additional questions, and you know, obviously not with the forum, but.
Yeah.
Another counselor, let's get together with Darcy, and I'll call him.
Okay.
Answer more questions. Thank you.
Okay, and let's go on to item seven, and ordinance number seven, zero, one, dash, two, two, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Postville Iowa by adopting chapter sixty-three A concerning automated traffic enforcement. So Matt, you want to talk a little, or do we, Dan?
Dan's on.
Dan?
Your honor, yeah, your honor, thank you, this is Dan Morgan, um, this ordinance you're looking at, it's very similar to what you saw at the last meeting, uh, but I also wanted to make myself available tonight for any questions that might follow up on the memo that was provided to council, but also, uh, you know, any questions you may have about the process here in Iowa is a little bit, uh, unique, let's call it that. Uh, but ultimately, I don't have a position one way or another, on whether or not the city wants to go the direction or not, that's our decision for the council, if they want to go that way, but it is my opinion that if we, if they do want to go that way, we definitely want to have an ordinance, uh, in place before executing any kind of agreement with a vendor, so, I'm just kind of here for questions for anybody that wants to throw them out.
That's right, he wants, he wants the ordinance in place before we agree to do business with the vendor.
Is this what we voted on this last time, right?
Right. I guess that's. It was the ordinance that got denied, wasn't it, last time?
Right, but before that, you voted to install cameras, so we've been negotiating the contract. And we don't want to enter into a contract without having an ordinance in place.
Sure, well, and I guess my only question is, who, who decides how many times we keep voting on things, I mean, so if somebody has an opinion, they didn't like how the vote went, we just keep bringing it back until we get a different result, or?
Well, I'd probably the guy that brought this up again, because it seemed to me like it, 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 it was hung in there, you know, I mean, uh, then, I mean, I'm not here to sway anybody whatsoever.
No, no, that's fine.
So, yeah.
Well, there was some discussion after the vote that maybe it should be done, because it is for safety purposes. I mean, after it was that, there was only four people here, and it was two to two, and then after it was voted, there was discussion, and it was kind of said that maybe this would be a good thing because it's for safety.
And I'm fine with the for safety, but it's kind of like, uh, Fox Garden, the hen house, that if he knows it's going to get shot coming in this door, it goes in the different door until it gets the chicken.
Do you think they're going to avoid the town to?
No, they'll slow down where the camera is and speed back up if they want to. It don't take the genius to figure out where the cameras are in town. It says it right on Google Maps if you run with that, speed camera ahead.
My question on the, on the thing, we have both ways, is that it seemed like the company that we're doing the business with, they had, they had all upside game, were they going to get more in fees than we did, and, than we did?
And how enforceable is that, I mean, if you get one and don't pay it, what happens to you?
Maybe it thirty percent, we're at seventy percent.
But they get thirty percent whether you collect on it or not?
They get thirty percent, we get seventy percent.
They get thirty percent whether you collect on it or not?
No.
Yes, I asked the guy when he was here.
Okay.
But that, okay, so let's say you set your limit at ten miles an hour before you're going to send a citation. They still get their thirty percent on that, that's my, they get thirty percent on those ones that you don't send on.
No, I think it's the only ones you do send on, but if you don't collect on them.
It's the only the ones you send on.
Only ones you send on.
Yeah.
Right.
Decide not to send a citation.
Correct.
They do not.
They do, no.
That's what I thought would have been wrong, they're cutting awful fast.
Well, the other part was, I think he said they get about two thirds to three quarters that pay them, and the others, typically you don't pursue them, because the dollar amount that it is, you can't afford to chase after them for seventy bucks. If it's a hundred dollar penalty and you're giving them thirty, you, is the city going to spend an attorney to, uh, go after seventy dollars? So that's the other part that people are figuring out, they just don't pay them.
What are the other towns doing on those ones, everybody, recently, everybody gets smart and wouldn't pay them?
So that means.
Well, that's a safe, a safe thing, people are not going to speed up and. Letting know there's a camera. Did I read this here or someplace else, that if you don't pay, that goes on your record then?
That it's off of this.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't go on your driving record.
Right.
This is, one goes off your driving record, which is. So, one over ten, ten over, um, it's fifty-five, your total fine is a hundred and eighteen twenty-five, goes in your driving record, and your court cost is one forty-nine eighty-eight. Right there is a straight fifty fee. That's it. This is the one that goes on their record, say if JT.
That's if you get stopped, correct?
The JT made the stop.
Yep.
It goes on your record. That does not go on your record.
But there's nothing to bite against that one either, if they don't pay it, other than if you want to spend the legal fees to go after.
And. I'm not for sure what the other towns are having issues with it, if they're pursuing it or not. I mean, you can.
Go ahead, Dan.
This, Danny, yeah, just a little commentary on that particular conversation, um, you know, obviously, you're right, that a lot of times people, you know, I get a client who says, well, I got one of these tickets, do I pay it or not? I say pay it, because you don't want shop and driving record, insurance and all that stuff, so there's kind of the perk there sometimes, you have just to pay the quote-unquote civil, um, penalty, if you will, but it, like Matt, what Chief was saying, you know, some cities kind of collect a few of them for the non-payment ones, they collect a handful of them, and, you know, tag them all, and send a batch of thirty through all at the same time, and see if that can kind of shake some, some things loose, you know, it's one of those things where then it becomes a real, quote-unquote, real citation, that sometimes gets people to say, okay, fine, you know, I'll, I'll pay it up, and we'll, we'll call it a day. Um, but obviously, yeah, then there are certainly some that, you know, want to take all the way to court, and then you, you are in that realm of saying, well, what does it cost to have legal counsel, prosecute that for the city versus what does it cost to get out of it, you know? Um, and the cities that do probably, you know, Cedar Rapids is a, is a big city and has a lot of these types of citations, but they also have in-house legal counsel, you know, they have a salary employee of the city, so it doesn't really cost them, you know, budget-wise, anything different than it would for anybody else, so.
You said that group of thirty, that was thirty citations for one person?
Not necessarily, no, so they might wait until, you know, they have, you know, thirty different people that have non-payment of the fines, and then, um, go after them all at the same time, yeah, they'd be different citations, correct, they'd be different municipal infractions, to be clear, but they may kind of do as one big group filing.
So we can tell them, if they get this ticket and don't pay it, it can go against their record. We can't do that.
No.
No, it'd be municipal fraction, it can go on, it can't, it won't go on their record. This one would.
Yeah, right, because you're going to stop them physically.
Yep.
Camera would be a municipal infraction. So it would be municipal infractions count up to beat.
That's, depends on what the city sets it at, like, you, we have one now for what's a new ordinance, Dan, for the nuisance.
Calls.
Calls, I think, what is the top, what is it? Seven fifty?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what the first one is either, yeah.
If seven fifty first offense up to a thousand second offense now, you know, that's going to be too high.
Yeah.
For a speeding ticket, but, um, in theory.
And that's some, that's what was set for those house ordinance, nuisance properties, that's what that municipal infraction goes towards.
I mean, if you want to look at it from a safety standpoint, if you really wanted safety to be a part of it, you'd probably lean more towards your portable one and be able to move it around so people don't know where it is, and by the time you're by it, it's too late, but like I say, the other ones, they can learn where they're at.
Bad thing with portable is manpower, you're going to have, uh, if you're going to do that, then you're going to be better off just to have an officer sit there all day long.
Okay.
Running citations.
Yeah.
Because you're in a portable, you got to have manpower to run it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, like, Green Street, it ain't going to do any good.
But if we do that, then why would we use the camera and just, then it'd go on their driver.
I don't know, I mean, I can sit on Green Street and watch them speed by all day long.
Do we have to pay for these cameras? I mean, is there a cost involved for the cameras?
They're thirty percent on everyone that you issue.
So that's the only.
But they'll be on, they'll be on buying them, they own them.
We don't have to pay anything to put them in. I just want to make sure.
They own, they're getting their money. They're, they're paying, they're doing the legwork of installs, they're doing the legwork of getting permission from the DOT on the roadway, they're doing the legwork of getting all the permits, um, that's why we're, you're here to have this discussion, Dan is kind of waiting, because he's dealing with Cory with the contract, working on that, and basically, that's what this ordinance is, to move forward. I mean, well, it was a two months ago, he said, yep, let's go for it, run the board, let's do it, now we're back to square one again, so.
So, um.
So if we vote on the ordinance, then we're going to have another vote on whether to put the cameras, right?
Your ordinance takes three readings, remember that, so you can do a first reading, set the second for next month, or you can waive your second, third, and pass it tonight, it's completely up to you.
Okay.
But yes, you would need to re, the contract is being negotiated by the city attorney now.
Okay.
So yes, you would have to sign the contract before anything starts.
So has there been a study done, how many people, what percentage of people that get cited like this don't pay their fines? I mean, you're saying people aren't going to pay them, you don't know that.
I think the guy told us two thirds or three quarters pay them.
They pay, well, then that's a pretty good percentage of them.
But you got to remember, you're paying thirty percent for every single one.
I, I understand that, I'm. It kind of depends too, I mean, there's some that are like a hundred dollars, and some that are two twenty-five, you know? So my question is, if we vote on this and cancel it, does that put, does that mean that we're going to have the cameras? So are we going to have to vote again to put the cameras?
Going to vote again, whether you want to do business with the company to install the cameras?
Just the contract, but the stage for putting the cameras in.
So I guess, this, this is, Dan, one way of looking at it is, is this is just the ordinance that would give a potential camera system force an effect in the city of Postville, you know, so in theory, we could pass this ordinance, and if we don't like the vendor, or we want to look for a different vendor, and, you know, that, that could still happen, we're not necessarily locked into that. Um, that being said, you know, uh, it would, it would be kind of silly to have an ordinance that didn't necessarily do anything, but in theory, you could. So, um, you kind of have another crack at it too, but like Darcy said, you could also do all three readings, you know, separate hearings if you wanted to, uh, if you wanted, you know, if that felt better to people or, or not, you know, it's entirely up to you guys.
How long's their contract timeframe, I forget that?
Well, we haven't signed any contract yet.
I know, but what was their, they're not going to come for a year and go through all that effort?
If the contract got signed, if they, if you guys agreed with the contract, they would start doing the process on their end, and they said they would have it probably in by October or November. Then they, there's a thirty-month, thirty-day grace period that they put out there with the signs, and everyone that went over the threshold would get it in the mail, say this is a warning, blah, blah, blah. After the thirty-day threshold, then it would come into effect, so they're, you know, depending what you guys decide, you know, it could be December.
How long's their contract run, though, I guess, is what I was asking?
As long as you, there's no.
I don't think so, I bet you there's a minimum, I mean, nobody's going to come in for, I mean, it's.
There's no timeframe. And if anything goes wrong with the cameras, they pay for it, that's why they have a business in West Union.
So if they come in and you don't want them in thirty days, they'll pick their cameras up and leave.
Correct.
No, didn't you say the county was going to put them in, in some towns?
Um, it would be the county to the west of us.
But they're going to put it in the towns that don't.
Because they supply law enforcement in those towns, so that they can get the money out of them.
Like the auction of Castilla.
West Union, no.
Not West Union.
No, southwest, I'm sorry, southwest.
So if we don't put them in, the county can't come in.
No, because we have our own law.
We have our own law enforcement.
Any more discussion on this one? Is there somebody that'd like to make a motion to accept the ordinance?
I move we accept that ordinance.
Becky has made the motion, is there a second?
I will second it, just call a vote.
Okay, so this is roll call?
Yep. You ready? Inkley Hart?
Yes.
Eatonstrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
No.
Brimmerman?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
So do you want to waive your second and third, or do you want to just go to a second reading?
Want to go to a second and third reading.
Okay.
All right.
You don't need to do anything.
Okay, so the, yeah, so we will have a second reading next month?
Yep.
All right.
In which case, we'd have to get the vote again on this, because we're seeing both process, right? That's what I want.
Yep.
Is there any study information out there that we could have at the next meeting to show the safety throughout the cities that have them?
I don't know.
My sister is with the city of Cedar Falls, and she said that they did.
Check with the contractor council members in West Union, Fayette and Strawberry Point.
Check, because I want to know how it affects the residential areas, I guess.
Well, they say it does, what I was trying to say there was that it, they say it does slow everything down, you know, and Waterloo has the information for that, that it really slows things down, and, um. They do do that.
It affects your, your business, your business community.
Yeah, and I don't know enough research, so, excuse me.
Talk to, um, the owners of, uh, Blimpies on one fifty in Fayette.
Good or bad?
They love them.
I get that on one fifty, but I'm asking about the residential areas.
Yeah.
They were, uh, you know, on one fifty, they're the, from, the north side goes from fifty-five, drops down to thirty-five before them, and you were having vehicles coming through at seventy. And then once the cameras came in, it said it slowed traffic down tremendously.
Would that be more business for them?
Yep, and then even with the school at West Union, coming in from the north, cameras there, it, that traffic has dropped for the school purposes.
Right, yeah, but that wasn't, that didn't have anything to do with the area's community.
Well.
And I get that where the cameras are, I don't want to know where the cameras are, I want to know what it's going to do for our safety where our kids are located. Our kids know to watch when they're crossing the main street.
Well, they know, but sometimes those people are going so fast, I mean, twice, I've about been clipped when I'm pulling my little tractor out and watering the flowers, and somebody doesn't stop at the stop sign at the doorway, you know, they just, and if there's parked cars, you know, this diagonal parking, parking really.
Especially the one coming in from the north.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they come from the.
Because they don't see us.
Right, when they come from the north, this diagonal parking, if you're trying to pull out from one of these side streets, it's.
Yeah, I won't argue that at all.
Yeah, there's, there's areas, you know, so, and, and, and you know where these cameras are, there's, it's posted, they're signed, so it, it's just because you, you have to inform the public.
More input about people running through the stop sign at the doorway that I have anything about speed.
Right. Well, that'd be another thing we can work. Well, that'd be another thing we can work, work, we can work on that, you know, too, okay, because, you know, this, this won't stop, this won't make them stop.
Well, it, it's not that they don't want to stop, they just don't see the stop sign, how it's located.
Okay.
I don't know too many people that, well, completely, right, I mean, they might slow down and take off, but I don't know too many people that blatantly are at a stop sign. I think it's just, it's typically from the north. Would you agree on that, Matt? That it's just with that parallel parking, it's, it's over so far that they don't see it. Is, and I could be all wrong, but that's my thought.
Yeah. All right, well, that'd be a subject for another day, but, uh, we can, let's go on into item eight here, and, uh, so ordinance number seven zero two dash two two, and ordinance amending chapter forty-seven, park regulations of the city code of ordinances. Matt, go ahead.
Oh, um, I don't even, was it last month or month before when we brought this up?
Yeah, it was, yeah, probably the month before.
Okay, um, I want to include the fairgrounds, basically the hours to have included as part of the city parks, like Myers Park, Law Park, um, getting too much activity going on after hours. Uh, you know, typically, the park is what, open from six AM to ten PM, on the other parks we have now. Um, I would say if there's nobody in there camping, it wouldn't affect the campers, but non-campers shouldn't go by the park regulations that we have already set in, in town for hours.
At six AM to nine PM in Law's Park?
I think it's ten.
Oh, is it ten? I was thinking it was nine. But you want to make it the same?
Same, yep.
So it'd be open to campers to not follow that, you're saying?
Yeah.
And then people that, if there are activities going up there, same thing?
Activities up there, the same thing, say they, the fair.
Or somebody rents it.
Rents it. I think, I don't know what it, what is it on Dreamland Midnight?
Midnight, but right now we're not doing anything. We discussed now what problems we have.
Yeah, so.
Trying, they want everything done by ten.
Okay.
Or, or they can't, right, until things, people behave themselves.
So you guys would be in favor of this as well, Mike?
See, me, Blake, a lot of us, a lot of work.
I'd make a motion to approve seven oh two dash two two.
All right, Ross has made a motion. Larry, any further discussion? Not all of them favors, oh, I have a problem.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Brimmerman?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
If they want to waive the second and third, I'm, I'm sure she would do so, otherwise I would go to the second reading.
Okay, so same way, second and third readings, you want them to go through, you want to waive them?
I know, we waived the second and third readings.
The second.
All right, there's a, we have to this roll call, all right. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Brimmerman?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Let's go on to item nine, then, uh, resolution number thirteen fifty-six dash twenty-two, a resolution approving a, the plat of survey to Elmickie County, Iowa, uh, Deborah L. Hanson owner. So we got to do each one of these separate, eh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we just agreeing that that is her lot lines on this?
Yeah, so, um, per the code, anything within a two mile radius of the city has to be approved by council.
Thank you.
And where's her lot, where's her lot at?
Do you want to talk?
This is out here on, um, Poline, you know, uh, Deb was Everling.
Deb Everling.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, out on her farm there, you know.
It's just when they subdivide any property off, we have to prove it as I correct?
Yeah, well, you'll catch more as we go here. It's all the same. This property is, is, uh, you know, as, as you, the next one, you know, has to do, they're all three connected.
Okay.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution one three five six dash two two.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Brimmerman?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yeah.
Okay, that's passed in resolution thirteen fifty-seven dash twenty-two, a resolution approving the replat of survey to Elmickie County, Iowa, and that's Gary Gunderson.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Whenever you're ready.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Brimmerman?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, that's done. And then resolution number thirteen fifty-eight dash twenty-two A, a resolution approving the subdivision plat to Elmickie County, Iowa, Deborah Hanson owner. Make a motion to approve. All right, Ross, second?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay, whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Ingleheart?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Brimmerman?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, that's done also. Very good. Let's go on to item ten, then, uh, water rates, uh, for twenty twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-three.
So it's, uh, July, so it's that time of year you're to think about your water rates. Um, you have your current rates in your packet. And you need to know if you're wanting to make any changes to them, um, so that they can be drafted for your review at the next council meeting. I think last year we did one percent, if you remember right.
So is the water funders, have we been keeping it in decent shape, or?
Well, we've been okay, but, you know, everything's going up, so.
Right. Is there any big projects, like what we had with wastewater coming down the road on regular water that you foresee at all?
Well, we, we'll be looking at my brand street here next year, that'll be your big
Okay.
project, so we're hoping to take care of that shower sewer and address any infrastructure on that truck route. The road is starting to become pretty deteriorated, so, um, so you probably will be borrowing for that. Um, we're still paying our oh five water bonds. We still do have some debt that's being paid out of water and, um, a few more years on that. But like everything else, you know.
Right, everything increases.
Yeah.
I was just asking mainly with adding that compost one, if we could get by one year without, I don't necessarily got a hard, strong feeling in my opinion either way on it, but one percent isn't huge, but we did add a two fifty a month or whatever it was compost fee here.
I think you got to keep stepping it up every year.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not opposed to that. Right.
One percent or twenty-five percent increase, but they would have a
Right.
wait three years and have a seven, you know?
Yeah.
What do you suggest is a percentage increase, Darcy?
I would suggest at least a one percent. You, we can draft the ordinance, and you can let it go through readings and get the comments. And probably, you know, we'll put it in the paper and.
A little bit off topic, you'd mentioned the truck route. Um, has there ever been consideration of switching that? Not that I want more traffic on Green Street, but it seems like a lot of the semis are already utilizing that instead of trying to go down through that residential, make that corners that are tight that way, but like I say, I'm not really looking for more traffic on my street, but it seems like a lot of them utilizes already. Something to think about in the future. We don't need to, it's nothing for tonight, but.
I need some.
Of whatever we want.
I move that we increase the water rates starting July one of twenty twenty-two, or will it be twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, one percent.
Would it be July one though, or, because?
Um, well, remember, our utility's always behind, so.
Okay.
You know, it, but you have to pass this by ordinance, so we're going to draft an ordinance that you're going to have to review at the next.
So when they're, whenever it becomes effective, basically, that we won't retro?
Right.
Bill?
Yeah, you bet.
It's whenever the ordinance goes into effect.
Okay. Well, yeah, I was just looking out for you guys for keeping nightmare of trying to go back and.
Pretty doing. Okay, so Larry? Larry, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, and that's roll.
Nope.
No, that's, really? Any further discussion? Not all of them favorites say aye.
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 Oh, say no, that's carried. Okay, uh, item eleven, uh, security camera at City Hall.
Okay, so a while back, I gave you a quote to upgrade some security here at City Hall. Um, we were replacing a camera outside the police door to a three sixty. That camera has been in and out. So some days it's good, some days it's not. Um, and then we were looking at adding a camera on the back of City Hall that would be on the corner here, that would show the parking, the utility box, um, the alleyway. And that quote, when I gave it to you, they quoted like two thousand five hundred dollars, and at that time we had the money to do that. Um, however, when I went back to them to get the project, they said, we will not honor it because we forgot to put the labor in the quote. Hence it doubled. So we couldn't afford to do it at that time. So since then, I've gotten a new quote. I went out and wrote a grant to ICAP, which you saw in the past round that we received a thousand dollars um, for the security camera improvements here at City Hall. We do have this in our new budget year, and so I'd like to move forward at this time with the cameras here at City Hall. And that amount was four thousand five hundred and five dollars and seventy-six cents, because that quote did reflect some tax on it.
I mean, move we take care of those cameras. One that's replaced them and added one in the parking.
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
So that added one will get like towards the, your guys' entry door then too as well, or do you have one already that covers that?
It'll be replaced one outside here, no cover, cross street, entry and corner. It's a three sixty, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Is there any discounts that we get from insurance by having cameras? I'm assuming that, but.
No, but we did get a grant from insurance.
No, yeah, no, that's what made me even think of it, was that you brought that part up. I'm like, well, did they give any breaks for having surveillance?
All right, any further discussion? Not all of them favorites say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, carry.
Aye.
All right, thanks, yep. Okay, item twelve, uh, water request from the Big Four Fair, Mike? Or Blake, either one, both of you can stand.
And like, for the last thirty-some years, the Big Four Fair requests the city for free water for use for deer and a bear. And we like to request that again, so appreciate all the city's help for everything we do. This year, we had all type numbers as far as livestock. Roughly, we had sixty-five new exhibitors this year, and we're busting the seams. So after, it wasn't that many years ago, we liked, we had any, that we're doing something right, so appreciate everybody's help. Larry going through those live stuff and everything that's.
Yeah, I think so, changing your pig show from a terminal to a jackpot helped that side of things, but yeah, you guys did tremendous growing, yeah.
Dairy beef.
Yeah. Yeah.
One of the things we're looking at, a couple of years, we'll probably have to put up a new dairy farm.
Sad thing is more people don't come for free entertainment.
That was the thing.
Where you.
Weird way down.
Yeah, it's everywhere. I don't know why, but anywhere there's free entertainment, it doesn't seem like.
Friday night, we were about half a month people as it was the year before at Saturday night. Everything entertainment wise was dead.
Yeah, and it was good entertainment, but.
As far as the beer strippers, they had a lot of pro, other towns had the same problems on Saturday night.
And I'm sure the economy isn't helping, but, yeah.
At least, I don't know what it is, but I was talking to Kevin from Farward, former of Deans, he said every place was dead Saturday night. They didn't sell much.
Weren't there three ratings in the alumni banquet?
Yeah. Well, alumni banquet, I mean, they, they requested us here back to bring entertainment on Saturday night.
Ah.
Yeah.
But we will be, have, next morning discuss what we're going to do, because we probably lost about ten thousand bucks.
Wow, I guess you have to pay them.
That's one thing we took his contract for the renting out the campground for too much, so I'll help pay for a lot of that.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to waive the fee for the fair.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Larry, any further discussion? Not all of them favorites say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
There's a lot of people that tell me that.
It does, it's a great deal. Okay, let's go on to item thirteen, uh, request for use of city dirt. This was brought up after the last big rain, uh, and it was, I, I don't know what happened. Kyne Abrams brought that, and he had pictures, like, you know, and, and that's in the packet, um. And so Dave and I went and looked at it the next morning, and, and, and it looks like, uh, well, we'll probably get a contractor, like either, uh, one of our local contractors to take a look. But it almost looks like, first of all, there's low areas, you know, where the water pools and it pushes back. And, uh, the storm sewer there is very shallow. So, uh, it's not like you could come in there and, and put some tile in and, and even get to the storm sewer, you'd be, you know, you'd have to make it go uphill. So, uh, it looks like it would take some dirt fill, you know, to, uh, build up those backyards and almost just, and that, this is just me looking at it, you know, and kind of making a ditch to direct the water to the storm sewers. And, uh, well, uh, after talking to those folks, and, and the thing is, uh, you know, this will probably, it'll be on their dime, but we can actually furnish the dirt because we got a pile of dirt. Okay? You know, so the request here is, is, you know, if you guys want to let some dirt go. You know, and, uh, we haven't went back to talk to these folks yet, if this is something they want to do, but I said, let's cross this bridge, at least they could get some dirt, so, yeah.
Is this down behind Mark's house back in?
No, no, that, this one is up there, uh, uh, right across from.
Winter share.
It's North Reynolds and Tilden, Kyne Abrams and Vivian Peterson are the two lots on the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
In the alley in the back.
In the alley, yeah, yeah.
It's a regular pond back there.
Yeah, yeah.
So by raising it, do you think that'll, this storm can handle taking more water, or is it just going to pond it somewhere different?
I, first of all, you know, you're going to have that much water because it didn't get to the storm.
Right.
So.
That's what I mean, is it going to be able to handle taking that?
Well.
Because when we get those big storms, it seems like we're, I don't know how it is there, but we're backed up and gushing out up this way.
Yeah, well, that's, uh.
I mean, is, is it going to take one person's problem and make it somebody else's problem?
Yeah, well, but I think that then if that's the case, we're, we're going to have to look at really doing something.
Right. Yeah, I'm just afraid, you know, all that goes to one spot, it's the biggest problem that we've got. We're trying to alleviate that, but maybe a good question for Chris.
Yeah.
Not, not that I like it for them to have a problem, but.
I think that the issue is, is that the homeowner needs to talk to a contractor.
Right.
Because all we'd be doing is allowing the contractor, it's not on city.
But I just don't want to.
City project.
Right.
So that would be an answer, that a contractor, you know, that they have somebody professional come and advise them.
Yeah, right.
If that is something.
But at the same time, it's not fair to take your problem and make it someone else's either, if it's just going to get rid of theirs and.
They could legally do it themselves if they wanted to, without, you know, so.
And I, the way it's set up right now, that's, it's, it's, you know, if the water doesn't get there, and it only gets there after it pushes it uphill to the west, you know, so, uh, um, and you know, these five inch rains, you're going to have a problem everywhere.
Right.
So, uh, it's, um, and, and that, this wasn't, I don't believe was ever meant to be, if you had low, you know, this is supposed to be a relief valve? I don't think so, you know, so.
But that's kind of the purpose it serves.
Did these folks request dirt from the city?
No, no, they, they, they did not. In fact, I didn't know we had a pile. You know, when we went and looked, you know, and when you can see how low that is, and, and really the only remedy is put fill in there, you know, so, yeah.
They came and asked, what can we, what can we do as homeowners? What, is there something the city's doing in the alley? Like, is there, is that a project you're doing? That alley is on our list. Um, I think we did go out and look again to see if it was ideal, if we could pull it up to maybe do some storm. There's a, it's a pretty shallow storm there, um, but just the piping alone was forty-seven thousand. That's just. That's just the pipe. So we just couldn't. It's, it's on our list, but it's not, it wasn't that critical for us to to be able to do that right now, so.
And that's kind of what, I think at one time I was gonna tile out the library extra lot. There's a big hole there, but it rains those five inches, we get it in our ductwork. And I talked about putting dirt in there. The landscaper said, no, not until you can alleviate the other houses bringing water or the libraries bringing water. So we've got the same issues right there in that extra lot.
So the, and this may not even be used, you know, because, uh, these folks are gonna have to do this really on their own. We're just gonna provide some dirt.
Yeah, I don't see any reason that anybody that needs dirt can't come and get it from us for as much dirt as we got out there if they're willing to, uh, pay to get it. Not, not pay the city, but pay for the removal of it. Yeah, I think we got dirt to quite a ways, but it saved us from having to haul it.
Right, yeah. So now there's a purpose.
I, I hope that we give those folks free dirt.
Is there a second?
Free is they gotta pay to get it. I mean, not pay the city, but they gotta. Yep, yeah, we're not gonna haul it for them.
No, the city is not.
Yeah, yep, there you go.
All right, any further discussion? Not all of them favor say aye. Oh, say no. Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda. There that stretch you.
Building permits here, this, uh, Kind Cypress. That's just, that's on his house, right?
Right, his on the back of Jack.
And then Esteban Flores, that's over eighteen, that, that's already been done, isn't it, that improvement?
This is another, he's building a mudroom on the front.
Is that right by the motel?
Yeah, they can probably see him because they have.
Right, so that, that was this one here.
Yeah, we don't approve the permits, it's just in there for us to see. As long as they meet their requirements.
Do you want to say anything about the fire department in that letter, whatever you want?
Oh, remind me.
They wanna talk to separate or whatever you.
Yeah, so, you know, uh, with, with our fire department, uh, the talk has been going that they want to, uh, break off and, and go on their own. So, uh, we've, um, so to keep this thing moving, um, I, they asked me one day, or one of them asked me, what are, what are, what is the council looking or what's the city looking for out of them? And I said, we wanna, we wanna know if this is what you guys want to do. So in their last meeting, they did vote and they voted to continue to explore the, the possibility of splitting off, so, uh, um, that's done. And, and do we have, is Dan, Dan, are you still there? Okay.
Yep, I'm still here.
Oh, yeah. Are you, are you working with, uh, Matt Erickson on that?
Yeah, so, you know, my marching orders, at least I understood them previously, was Matt has volunteered to kind of take the spearhead, putting together the agreement that he has seen maybe in some other communities. And I figured that kind of made sense. Let the cost kind of be borne by them at least initially, but short answer is yes. Um, Matt's working on that. I don't have a draft yet. Uh, but certainly can follow up with him and see where he's at.
Yeah, well, that's good, that, because I, you know, I forget things. So I, I didn't know of, uh, just how that was proceeding right now. So that, that's good, because, you know, some, these things are gonna take a little time, right?
Yeah, if, if, if that's the direction we ultimately end up going, it, it's gonna be a little bit of a process, not just the agreement. We'll have to kind of, you know, communicate with some of the, uh, rural areas that are currently serviced by, uh, the fire department. So they'll have to be kind of part of the conversation too.
Well, that's it, that's, uh, everybody needs to be informed. So, good, good. Okay, so that's, uh, yeah, that was that. Anything else?
He's on the phone, so, yeah.
So the U P E R C, U E R P C property, uh, that was more of the not, was not.
They did purchase.
I thought they, I heard it. So then, uh,
So the, yeah, the hospital bought that and that'll be their plan is eventually to be in that building. I don't know, we'll see. We'll see.
They may not use a boat.
Right, right. Cause they're not, they, they have no intentions of not gonna haul out, so, at, at this time anyway, so, yeah. Any other questions on?
I'll tell them not to bring that mass casualty trailer with the construction equipment, cause it kind of freaked me out. I saw that trailer sitting on the step, you know, the street, I know, what happened?
They had, they had building material.
Yes, I know. Someone opened the door at that time, but, anyway.
So anything else on the agenda? Yeah, we'll talk about that about con- in comment time. But right now, can we get, let's get the consent agenda out of the way.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, second. All those in favor say aye. Now, item fifteen, uh, resolution for money to pay the claims. Okay, is there a second? Are you ready, Darcy?
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
Brimmerman?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, item sixteen, back to public comment again for the, after we sat through this meeting, has anybody got anything to say about that? I'm glad Nathan came down. Uh, I think, you know, we're, we learned a few things, you know? And, uh, yeah, so, and if I can, I, I think I can, uh, cause that is my report next, but, um, but what bugs me a little bit about this is it's too bad. They, 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 they don't give communities, the communities, the, the possibility of making up their mind on how they should be. You know, because, uh.
You're preaching to the choir on that. Also, the legislature, you know, there's, there's always somebody who wants to tinker with that or restrict your ability. What I always tell the legislators is bang for the buck, they do have, the state does have to pay some backfill to the schools. I have a state coffer because TIFF collects some of the school money. Um, but as far as bang for the buck and having local control, really doing stuff with that, Urban Rule TIFF by far does the most. And we have communities, from the smallest communities to the largest, who can use that and prioritize projects, et cetera. Um, and so, you know, if the state wants to control the huge projects and give away that money, that's fine. As far as the ability to allow the local communities to figure out what local incentive work, I think they should try to loosen it up a little bit. There's always one bad project or something that makes headlines and then that makes for some bad laws sometimes or overreaction. It's not unique to this particular topic, but I agree with you there.
All right, well, thanks. And I, I thought maybe you're gonna be running for an office and.
But I don't mind talking to them, I just, you know. It's usually that one thing that catches everybody's eyes and like, oh, they, this one maybe did that, so we have to take away that control that. I think housing, again, if you have contact with your own local legislators, there's a lot of attention on housing and everyone recognizes the need. And so to the extent you talk about, hey, if you don't, if you want us to help you, help us, you help us. Help our community get more housing. Those type of projects, the three things I see is they could use some stuff that Urban Rule TIFF to make that more useful um, for market rate housing. Uh, then check fifteen A is what I was talking about to give, allow you to just use the money directly to either a developer or homeowner building a home, um, make that more clear. And then tax evasion, you guys had, in five minutes of listening to me talk, had two great ideas with respect to maybe increasing that seventy five thousand on a cap if they don't want to get rid of it altogether or kind of reduce the scale or something. All good ideas.
All right, well, thank you. And I don't know, was I, remind me again, was I supposed to bring up another thing?
You were gonna talk about rag burn.
A rag burn, yeah, which is, you know, right around the corner now. Yeah, it's been, been there for a long time and by golly, it's gonna, it's gonna come. Yeah, and so, um, here we are as a community. And, uh, I think, has it been picking up a little bit though, Darcy? I mean, I, I knew, I, I knew I could depend on these folks, that, that, uh, the closer it gets, we need volunteers. We just need volunteers. And, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, you know, when you get an influx of folks, like, we're gonna see, you know, the guys that were here in seventeen when they came through. That it's, it's amazing, you know, it's something that all of a sudden, you know, like I said before, you can take the size of our county and and, uh, times four, you know, here they are. And, and so here, uh, uh, but we're getting, we're getting there and, and we've got, uh, I believe all the vendors have signed in now. And, uh, so, and, and Larry, he's in charge of the trash.
Have you taken inventory of your barrels?
I have been up there to do that.
Other barrels, you know, that I can have access to, it doesn't matter how many barrels there are all around.
That was next week's project.
And that's good, that'll be well to work yet next week.
Hopefully by Monday.
I'll try, yeah.
Just matter where I go.
Yeah, next week's eighteen thirty, isn't it?
Nope.
Ten or twelve.
Cause you, well, you want to keep some up there.
Right, right, but that twenty five total.
I'm thinking that's probably.
They said one of those IBA dealers that we do, that we started, they, they just donated twenty barrels to play at county fair.
Okay.
Well, if I could get them, hopefully they don't already have the tops cut off, they get them, transport those barrels and whatnot to be cut tops. You know, Jim Zeman, he's been out, he was gonna get me some barrels, so, trying to get barrels and a list of volunteers to help drive little carts. For a cart to haul the bags.
I'm helping on trash detail.
Eight or ten, you know, but we only have one dump, one big dumpster to throw these in.
Well, there's dumpster behind City Hall too, but yes, it's a humongous dumpster.
Which is down in that city park one.
It's gonna be in city parking. By where the cell towers.
South of twelve fifty one, right?
So that's where we're gonna take the trash.
That is where it's going.
And it might be, you just pile on the north side until everybody's cleared out and then haul it over.
On the north side, you mean on the west side?
Oh, yeah, west, yeah, yeah, it'd be west, yeah.
That was my question, if we could get another dumpster on the west side of, like in the.
It'll be okay, Larry, but we'll get the garbage to the dumpster, I assure you. We did it in two thousand seventeen, we'll do it again. It'll be fine. We don't need another dumpster.
It'll be good, it'll be good. Everything's gonna come together.
So, let me ask you, are there bags in the dumpster and then we just take off the bag?
Purchase the bag.
Yeah, bags in the trash barrels and they're just.
You have T-shirts for your volunteers that are gonna be on this detail?
Is it gonna take trash lady?
No, it's not. It's meant to be volunteer shirts for your sister and whoever else ever. And they're allowed to drive like golf carts, ATVs, you know, around.
Find that you won't get close to them with an ATV or golf cart.
You gotta walk.
Yeah, this is like going into the state fair of packed vendors.
We have to walk to pick up.
Hey, the state fair takes the garbage truck right through. What do you mean you can't fit an ATV?
Well, like if you're in the midway.
Last, last time Doyle had a big wagon.
Right.
Well, you can get an ATV in the alley though.
Right, you can drive it that far.
Yeah, you could use it from the alley the whole way there. That's what I was getting at. Use your ATV and cart in the alley.
Right.
And then just pile it on the west side until afterwards and then haul it, because you aren't gonna get across that street. Turn and carry.
For the logistics, we have the song, you know.
Right, just leave it until afterwards and it's cleaned up be quicker.
And I better get some younger, I better get a younger garbage crew.
Yeah, I think you better get a younger one than me.
Don't give up.
You can still drive.
Just being on patrol with this, you know, like.
There you go.
That's it.
ATV, whatever.
But Doyle, just on the sidebar behind the vendors, he had a wagon that he would put stuff in and just, that was easier. Yeah, he.
Hey.
Pulled it.
Doyle did it before, check in again.
He needs, he uses exercise anyway. So we're getting that, so, yeah, I'm done, council, council, you guys, hear your comments, are you done? Got anything?
Uh, when doing the parking spots, you know, they, we talked about putting another handicap one in. Oh, yeah, um, the one in front of Sandy's is used by a business owner on that street as his own personal parking space. So she was, she would appreciate another handicap one closer to her building. So that her customers who need it more maybe than the other person.
That person handicap?
Yeah.
He was handicapped.
Yep.
Anyway, she just said it's hard.
It's a city street, so he can't, you know, have that, he has his own personal one.
He's the first one there, so he.
If it's empty, you can.
And there's no.
It's empty there, he's gotta, he's gotta permit. That's why I brought it up last month to put in another one right beside it. Yeah.
So anyway, does he have two vehicles? He won't be able to park. That is so weird. So, put the, please put another one, not by the doctor's office.
It's not in yet, is it?
No, Dave's gotta put it in.
Is there, speaking of parking, is there any point in exploring changing the angle parking issue? I know it's gonna cut spaces down, but.
That's, that's a DOT question.
What about like on Green Street though? That's tight too.
That'd be a, so that's up to you guys, that's city. But this is DOT, so that's up to what I would think they would. I think, I think their only main concern is as long as cars are off the streets and come winter time when they can follow, they that's, they're only gonna be their main concern.
Right, which there'll be less of them. I mean, maybe we take too much away from the business community by doing that too.
You don't like the diagonal parking over this way?
Nobody does. It's tough coming out.
Or, or if you're in a parking spot, get out to back out.
Back out slowly.
Yeah, but you still can't see if there's, every, all these vehicles have gotten so big anymore, it's not like you're bigger than somebody and can see over behind it. But, yeah.
Biggest bumper wins.
That's usually the one coming down the highway, no matter whether it's biggest or smallest.
Well, so that's where the cameras will help us slow down and help it to back out. Won't hurt as much.
Just a suggestion out, when those diagonals got put in there, cause the restaurant requested those, cause they needed more parking. Cause there's not enough parking for the restaurants for it.
Oh, the big Mexican one now? But that was from a long time ago.
Yeah, but it'd be the same problem again.
Right.
You go down, hell, Beatles, you go down there certain nights, that whole side street is solid cars.
So I say it might do too much damage to the.
Church across the street, same thing, that whole street is packed.
Well, that, that's that, um, um, a church across from where the, I guess it was where the old theater was, so. A hairdressing place. There was a funeral there one Saturday morning and you couldn't park anywhere. Cause it was so packed with vehicles that are going to do it.
Yeah, city parking lot usually has space, but there's not a real convenient way to get there other than walk around the entire block, which we could probably.
I wasn't gonna go to City Park and like to go buy coffee next to him.
That was requested by. That was requested by the business owner.
Oh, I, you're, you're talking on Green Street, talking, you're back here?
Yeah, on Green Street, yeah. I had a parking lot.
Is there, if we're done, is there a most to turn? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh. Thanks, Evan, Dan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.